allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
us. Yep. Yep, we're good to go on our side. We're good. Okay, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Report out on closed session. There's nothing to report. Any conflict of interest declarations from the agenda? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions, David?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Do we have anyone in our public that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. I love this. Moving into C, communications. Public written communications sent to council since the last meeting may be discussed at this time. C1 is a dog park naming rights. Want me to explain, or David, do you want to, or?
Mayor, the correspondence in your packet was submitted by Mr. James D. Martini requesting naming rights for Cloverdale Dog Park. I think since that time, we've had a discussion that there's an opportunity to sponsor the park under existing park sponsorship program, the request made, but we will continue to coordinate and collaborate with Rotary as an important service group within the city.
Correct. But there is no naming rights to the Rotary being considered at this time. Perfect. And for anyone that's watching, that will hopefully clear up all the emails and conversations. Anyone else have anything on that?
Do we want to go ahead and send that to a subcommittee for consideration?
What we did is, I'll go over the whole process. So they asked about this at first, and then it's had a real informal conversation about it, and they want to actually do the adopt the park off the website. And so they're in contact with David and with Hector, and they're deciding on how they want to do it and see, but they're looking at like shade structures, things like that, and do it through the Adopt a Park project off of our website.
That sounds great. Looking forward to seeing the next steps then. It sounds like it's a little early days, so. Great. Thank you.
Robert, were you here for that? Would you like to speak on it at all? Could I ask you to step up to the podium, please? Well, you know, the audience is packed and we got a jammed agenda here, so.
We have a pretty rad crowd right now.
The thing I was thinking about was purchasing or sponsoring the dog park that you guys have just built. I think it would be a win-win situation for both Rotary and the city. Basically, my thoughts were perhaps negotiating a sum of money in order to initially purchase the dog park rights and also to offer a yearly stipend to help with the maintenance of the dog park. The amounts to be determined, obviously, by committee and our attorney and you folks. Separate issue is the bricks that we're considering doing, and I know that Lynn Hoyer is working with David on that, asking exactly what we can do as far as that goes. You all know we did the brick sales at Kleiser Park. It would be the same type of approach. Our thoughts are to build a wall, okay, sell bricks, right, various sizes, that type of a deal. And with that money contributed to the dog park as far as maintenance, facilities like, you know, maybe benches, awnings, toys for dogs, whatever the dog park would need. So once again, thinking that would be a win-win situation. So it's something I'd like you to consider if it's feasible. I don't, I think you said that it's not in committee or any of that at this time, but maybe you could find a committee that could look at that and negotiate with us to see exactly what we would be able to bring to the table. But I think it would be win-win for both of us, and I'd like you to proceed if you can.
Absolutely. I know, like I said, Lynn is in contact with Hector and Kevin and David right now, so I'm sure she wouldn't mind you joining in that conversation and hope, trying to keep it out of a committee, so it makes it a little easier, more streamlined. As far as all of the projects that, absolutely, yeah. Anything you can do to help us facilitate? We try to do it the most efficient way.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Anyone else have anything on that? Great. Moving into D, the student liaison report. Yada, how are you?
No, mine does.
Mayor, check one.
Thank you. So I was sick, so I'm back now. In December, Jefferson had a walk and roll on December 6th, and from December 18th to the 21st, they would be dismissed at 2:20 because of that being basically almost winter break. And on the last day, it was Spirit Day in which they wore PJs. While in this month, in January so far, they canceled walk and roll because of the weather conditions. And in Washington, on December 18th to the 21st, they had Spirit Week, which was based off Christmas themes. Also during December, the club, which is an organization that has different activities that either can help you with school or simply activities like indoor soccer to have fun, had a calendar full of different events to do either at the high school or the old Boys and Girls Club.
Great. Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Anyone want to pull any items? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Second. I have some new titles I had to get used to. Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan Stern.
Aye.
And Councilmember Walter. Vice Mayor Wheeler.
Aye.
And Mayor Lins.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving into I, new business. I1, the proclamation procedure. David, is this you?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is consideration of proclamation approval and request procedure, and there's really kind of multiple components to this agenda item tonight. One of which includes a form for addressing proclamation requests going forward. But in addition to the form that was developed by our city clerk, there's also a resolution outlining a recommended proclamation procedure. I did want to mention that this agenda item was brought forward at the request of Councilmember Morgan Stern, and I know her request was really to focus on discussing the proclamations. There is a list included in your packet that provides some of the existing proclamations that we've brought forward over the previous year, 2023, as well as a list of potential proclamations. The potential proclamations are highlighted in yellow and, again, are just identified on the list for your consideration. Kind of a little bit of background in terms of what are proclamations and what is the intent. Proclamations really, as outlined in the agenda report, are an official announcement by the city council to formally recognize often individuals in our community or residents or community-based organizations that's, you know, reflected in the actions taken by council to, you know, acknowledge, for example, the Cloverdale Chargers Pee Wee League, who's a junior varsity team, won the league. So there's an opportunity for council to, you know, recognize, formally recognize, the incredible work by those young individuals. Likewise, proclamations often are ceremonial. They call attention to recognize a particular day, a particular week, or to honor or celebrate an event or occasion or cause. A good example that we often like to bring forward is proclamation recognizing our police dispatchers for the important work that they provide to our community. With that said, we, when I say we, staff often receive requests for proclamations, and knowing that those are intended to be reflective of the entire council, we believe it's beneficial to ensure that the proclamations that are brought forward are in accordance with your values and your beliefs and ultimately that you support them because they are reflections of the entire council. So we want and desire council to review the list and assess, you know, of those that we've brought forward in the past, do you want to continue with those? And of those potential that are on the list, do you want us to bring forward any of those or not? Likewise, because of the significant amount of work and time that goes into proclamations, we wanted to establish, again, a procedure so that, you know, council is, you know, recognizing that there is a fair amount of time that goes into bringing those proclamations forward. Of course, it takes up a fair amount of council time as part of your business agenda, and again, as a reflection of your values. So what we're really asking council tonight to do is to discuss your perspective on proclamations, and if you are so inclined to adopt a resolution that would approve the process for receiving or processing requests to bring proclamations forward for council consideration. At this point, you know, happy to talk in more detail about the proposed form. Again, we do have that identified as an attachment to the resolution, is Exhibit A, and this was a form that was, again, developed by our city clerk to help guide the intake process. We like to see that there is, you know, a representative that's going to support the proclamation, that's going to be in attendance, but also to provide the verbiage, the language in the proclamation. Because, again, you know, the proclamation is being brought forward, we want to make sure that council understands the language before it gets put on the agenda. Embedded in the process is that these requests, these forms, would be submitted to the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. With that said, those could come to council. That's really open for your consideration, and we were trying to, you know, our recommendation included in the staff report is just reflected of what we think might work for council in terms of reviewing these requests. So, Mayor, I'll pause there. Happy to entertain any questions council may have about this item tonight. I know Councilmember Morgan Stern may want to offer her, you know, her perspective and focus on the discussion of the proclamations.
Basically, what I want to discuss tonight is how the council can go about selecting proclamations. I don't really like the resolution. I think it's unnecessary, and I think it's jumping the gun. I wanted to have a discussion on how we can select proclamations just so that one doesn't come along that we don't agree with because it says the city council, you know, like there was one that I didn't agree with. And so that in the future, we won't have that problem. Like, how are we as a group going to select proclamations is what I wanted to do.
Do you have an idea of how you would want it to be done?
Yes. Before a proclamation hits the agenda, I would like to see it emailed to all of us, so that way if one person objects, then that proclamation doesn't get put on the agenda.
I'm just thinking, I like that idea. I mean, email it out or however we get it, but I don't think that if one person objects, that it's a done deal. I think that opens it up for more discussion. So if we all, say, for instance, you disagree on something, and I think that, like I said, opens it up for discussion. We can talk about it, and we may come to an agreement where, hey, I see a different side of it, and we want to follow on with it. So I think we do need to get it, but I think it should follow up with a discussion after that, not just dead horse it right there. You know what I mean?
Well, I think that the process could certainly be improved, but having council members weigh in on an email and not in public is basically doing business behind closed doors. And legally, I don't think this is going to pass. This hasn't passed the sniff test. You know, these, as, I mean, proclamations are important, but it's not the main part of what we do, and I don't really like getting, you know, necessarily getting bogged down, but it's part of the public process and it's part of our responsibility. And part of that responsibility is doing all of our deliberations in public. So, you know, I'm fine with them to continue to be sent out, you know, in the agenda packet so the public can see what we are reviewing and then hear our discussions in public, make our deliberations, and sometimes, you know, people disagree, and there's nothing wrong with that. And you just have to have a space where people feel comfortable disagreeing, and that's okay, you know. And then the public can weigh in and say that something is important to them, or say, you know, clearly there isn't consensus among the council. You know, maybe you don't pass this proclamation, and they should have the right to do that because we are their representatives. And actually, I, just to parse language a little bit more too, it's like, I think that the proclamations that we pass, it shouldn't, doesn't necessarily have to represent the council's values. It really should be representing the community's values. And we're never going to agree on everything, but I know one thing that popped out on the list was, I can't believe that we don't give a proclamation for Arbor Day. Because I think that that's something that everybody can agree on, can agree on, and that's something that we promote in our general plan. And it's also a reflection of our values in that, in the acquisition, the recent acquisition of open spaces. You know, we in Cloverdale and our voters think that our natural environment is important. So that's kind of a no-brainer, and I was just surprised to see that on the list of the proposed ones that we haven't necessarily done before. So the other thing I guess I'd want to see is that in places and proclamations where there's a county-wide initiative that we're a member of, like the Bike to Work Week and the Walk and Roll. I mean, I just want to make sure that when we are actively, or Creek Week, for example, which is something that is on the list, but it's something that we actively participate in, then I think that that's something that gets a first-tier priority. That that should just, that should come to the council. But I do agree that sometimes some of the proclamations are uncomfortable and they require us to have difficult conversations, but those conversations need to be on the record and in public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have to say that I don't think one no vote should actually torpedo the proclamation. When we act, we act as a majority, three votes, and that sets the course of the city. I mean, there may be things that you don't agree with, but it gets three votes. Well, it's the city's position at that point. So I agree that possibly they should be reviewed by a subcommittee. My concern, David, is a lot of these are last minute. For example, the last meeting we did, Al Del said Bob Cox in appreciation for what the sons had done for the cemetery. So now we're talking a delay depending on how often the subcommittee meets. So I'm not sure if you could walk us through how that process would work. I come into City Hall, I'm not on the approved proclamation list, but I want to do something for the Rotary because they really did something special. How would that process work?
Thank you, Councilmember Walter. I think in terms of requests from council, council could request that proclamation be brought forward under new agenda items. So that there's the opportunity for council members to do that at a council meeting under the, you know, existing agenda item, under new, you know, requests for items. Alternatively, again, that's why we wanted to, we're proposing the resolution tonight, was really just to adopt the form and process for receiving new requests was to have a request form be submitted to the clerk. And that form would be put on, or placed on the next Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee agenda for review, and if there was support at that Subcommittee, it would be placed on the council agenda. The benefit to that, again, is those are published agendas, those are made available to the public, so members of the community would have the opportunity to speak in support or opposition to that, to that item on the, you know, on the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. And, you know, it also, you know, gives an opportunity for, you know, some conversation, discussion around the merits for the proclamation. Once it was supported by the Finance, Admin and Police, it would be placed on the appropriate council agenda for council's consideration.
So if I was the individual who wanted to do something for the sons of the Legion because of their efforts at the cemetery, I would contact Mike, get a form, fill it out, and submit it?
That's correct.
Okay, and then from there, it will go to a Subcommittee for Discussion?
That's correct.
And then, so that would be public. You know, I would really hate to see us put organizations or individuals in an embarrassing situation if they didn't get enough votes to get a proclamation in their name. So I don't know. I agree that things should be discussed in public. We've had our procedure in place for years where the mayor, you know, would be okay with it. Maybe we need something in addition to a proclamation. Maybe we need a certificate of appreciation that's approved only by the mayor and the vice mayor for something that an individual has done without having to put them through the hoops. So just something to think about. Thank you.
I'll just kind of do a quick, I've got an idea that's kind of a hybrid of both. We have a long list of proclamations already set on our calendar and a whole bunch of proposed that other cities do. Why don't we take that to the Finance, Admin, Police, set our yearly proclamations that we truly want, modify that, and then as the emergency proclamations would pop up, or the ones that need to be a little faster down the line, those can go through the mayor as it currently does.
Appreciation.
Your certificates of appreciation, or if there is a proclamation, personally, I would agree with the one that you, I don't think we should be getting into international things here. I think that nobody cares what Cloverdale thinks when it's getting outside the lake out there. So I think that we should be focusing more on local, personally. However, I think that it should be that way so that, you know, it doesn't take eight weeks to get a proclamation put on. It could actually just go through the mayor as it does now, but we have our set schedule. That's my thought process.
And I could also see where we would do something like an employee appreciation would automatically be approved. I mean, that's, if David recommends it and the mayor goes along with it, then any employee recognition should automatically be approved. So, I don't know, maybe we need to chew on it a little more.
I have a question. Like, supposing I object to another proclamation, when am I supposed to object to it when it comes out? Like, when we read the proclamation and then I go, oh, by the way, I don't agree with this?
Well, on the bottom of the proclamation, it has the mayor's name, and it really comes down to that, is it gets put on my, the mayor's shoulders, whoever's in the seat at that time, it's put on their shoulders for it. It is also the mayor's job to make sure it is representative of our community as a whole. It doesn't represent every single person, but it represents the majority. And so the one person can't overrule, just like any other decision. There's a lot of things that go on up here that I don't agree with, but I completely support. The second is voted on and it goes through, I'm part of that vote, and I'm part of the process to say, I support that because my community supports it, my council supports it. And so even if you don't agree, you move forward with that in mind.
Okay, but you know the proclamation I'm talking about?
I do.
And I don't know how much you reviewed it before it hit the agenda.
I, we did a lot, actually, to generalize it versus be specific, which we haven't started.
Okay, but it hit the agenda. I didn't agree with it. Obviously, not all the public agreed with it, because two people kind of commented about that. So when would it be okay for me to say, I don't agree with this?
Under public speaking, you have the right to be a member of the public as well.
And under deliberations.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's your job. You know, you're here to, yeah, you're here.
So after we read the proclamation, then I would say?
You could even do it before. You could do it under public comment. You could do it under.
Okay. I think it might be a good practice when there's an issue that is maybe contentious or people don't agree, is to say, is, you know, is there any deliberation at the council? I mean, that's the purview of the chair, how we order things, but, you know, where it's something that people have maybe some more experience with or have strong opinions with, I mean, it's just that it's kind of, it's the responsibility of the chair to encourage debate amongst the council members. And I would have liked to have heard, you know, concerns and disagreements first. It's my recollection that that particular resolution, I don't believe it came to a vote. I don't think there was a motion. It didn't come to a vote. So that was the, that was the resolution. That was the resolution of the resolution. But I kind of just want to go back to, you know, kind of a discussion of just, you know, the things that could come up where proclamations are important. I noticed that under August, one of the potential proclamations is International Overdose Awareness Day, and I think that in years past, in a small town like Cloverdale, you know, maybe that wasn't front of mind that much. But in California, we've had such a rash of fentanyl overdoses and events that I'm sure our police officers have had to deal with head-on. And so that's the kind of thing that, you know, hits, suddenly hits small towns, and I think that's worth bringing up, and I'm happy to see it on a list of things that we might be considering. But, you know, that's something that's happening in our community with more prevalence than it used to, and that may be something that we're interested in. So, but it's also good then to have a conversation about it and get the public's input, put the chief on the hot seat, have him talk about, you know, overdose awareness and how it's impacting our law enforcement and our dispatchers. Because it's something that they and Cloverdale ambulance and our fire departments are having to deal with on an increasing basis. So, you know, I think it's important to be able to have that freedom of exchange, the freedom of ideas, and maybe we just approach how we, you know, they get on the, how they get on the agenda, but then also how we discuss them once they're on the dais. Because it may not be a burning issue for me, but for members of our community, if they've come for us for for us for consideration, they report to someone, and they deserve to have a public discussion and to be considered openly.
So, then, if we have a public discussion and Councilmember Morgan Stern, under public comments, says, "We have a proclamation next on the agenda, and I just have to let you know that I don't support that," and then three other people say the same thing, and the fellows in the audience or the ladies or the organization, I'm in the audience, and we have to say, "Well, you know, you don't get the proclamation." Hopefully, there's going to be a mechanism on the Subcommittee where we can kind of be pretty sure that it's going to at least get three votes on the dais.
I would hope so, but that's democracy, so, yeah. Suit up or go home.
If you go through the Subcommittee, you're already getting two.
Yeah, you're kind of, and hopefully, you're getting...
And you're not picking things or...
Hopefully, you're getting good feedback, too, and, yeah, hopefully, you're getting really good feedback. And I felt, I felt, I didn't have any part of that process in discussing that resolution that did not get a motion and did not pass, and I felt bad for folks who came and who had difficulty with it. But it was also, I think it was also a very good conversation, and we found out that we had a resolute, it didn't pass. I don't, I think we're, I think we're talking about the same one.
The proclamation for Israel.
Yeah, Israel and Palestine. And so, I, but I think that the public came and they saw us considerate, deliberate, we weren't happy with the final product, we never passed it. It was not, there was no motion made, I don't think we passed it.
It was just a proclamation.
It was just, we just read it, but I don't think we voted on it.
No.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, just a legal observation, the issue with the email from the council or one council member in stopping is that easily you could start getting into a discussion by email, so we just, that's, I agree that we have to be careful with that for serial meeting purposes. The city does not vote on the proclamations. Proclamations are usually just read and by the mayor, and I think at the end, I think it says, "I," and then it has your name as mayor. What I've seen in other jurisdictions is something very similar to what I think you're discussing here, which is, you have a pre-approved list, but the council says, "Yes, that's the pre-approved list for the year," and then they develop some type of program where, when requests come up. I do have, I have helped several jurisdictions that kind of have the process of, there's a request form, and it goes straight to the mayor, and then that's discussed, and the mayor puts it on because it's a proclamation. Others want to be a little more involved as well, but the council or a Subcommittee wants to be involved, so that's why I think that when David was kind of putting together this, it's kind of like, okay, how do we, how do we kind of hybrid and make sure that there's some council awareness of requests that are coming up and potentially a process? I would almost say that the first step is, and I think everybody's saying the recommendation was, get your pre-approved list for the year. That way, that this covers the most, everybody's on the same page, good, and as requests come up, either do you want it to go to a Subcommittee, or is it a process where you want to kind of have it go through the mayor? Sometimes you get one council member getting a request, going to the mayor, it could only be two members, there can't be another member to discuss, but as far as discussions when the proclamations come up, I think the practice is, it's read, are there any comments, would council members like to make any comments at that point? It is uncomfortable if you don't agree with it, but at that point, that's when probably the council member would say, "Just, I want to be on record, I don't approve of this proclamation, and here's why, sorry to bring it this way, no disrespect," whatever, you know, whatever the reasons are.
I know.
But at that point, that's when the comments could be made.
I really valued the members of the public who came forward and Councilmember Morgan Stern's comments, because I wasn't, when I was reviewing it, I was kind of like, "Hmm, eh, meh, I'm not really pleased with this." But, and then hearing folks from the community come and say, "I'm not really thrilled about, I'm glad you're doing a proclamation, but I'm not really happy with the language." I really appreciated that, because that was, I mean, it really was, I don't want to be, you know, sound dismissive about it, it was really educational and really valuable to just hear, and we all were able to just hear different points of view, and I thought that that was, that was really important, especially with such a difficult and hurtful subject. But I like the idea of maybe having that, the, having the calendar, kind of preapproving it, and then having a, kind of a higher bar for any proclamations that are outside of the calendar, I'm happy with that. But that, I think it could be reviewed at Admin Subcommittee and then put to the council for agreement.
I'd like to make a comment. I personally would rather not see it go to a Subcommittee, because that's just two people getting their say about it. I personally want some say about what proclamations go to the agenda, so for me, that would be very uncomfortable, having it go to a Subcommittee that I'm not on.
Oh, let me clarify, I meant the list, this calendar, the calendar list that we have in front of us, just that rough list, and then have a separate higher bar for any additional...
I was talking about, it's new proclamations.
Yes, that's what I was saying, too, new proclamations that are outside the calendar.
Well, I wasn't talking about the list, I was saying, supposing there's a new proclamation, and rather than it just hitting the agenda, I kind of would like to have some say before it hits the agenda, if that's at all possible, rather than it just going to a Subcommittee that I'm not on and they get to decide. I feel like I'm not getting any voice in what's hitting the agenda as far as proclamations go, and that proclamation, for me, was very uncomfortable, and I didn't really know what to do about it.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Well, if I'm hearing you correctly, then the city attorney's suggestion that after the mayor reads it and asks for comments, it's too late for you to really have any meaningful input, is that what you're saying?
No, I was...
You want it before it even hits the...
I want input before, I mean, it's going to a committee that I'm not on, so two people get to decide what is going to go on the agenda, and I just feel like I personally, this is just how I feel because of that one proclamation that I felt very uncomfortable about, I would like some say before it goes on the agenda. I mean, you know, maybe if it could go to a Subcommittee that I'm on or something, I mean, I just don't feel comfortable about the process. The resolution does not please me, how's that? And I feel like the resolution happened too soon because we weren't able to have a discussion first, and here's this resolution that we're supposed to vote on now.
See, and that's what we're, and that's the part of the process, is we bring something forward so that you have something to vote on, and if you read on your agenda, it says that the alternative solutions, number two says, "Provide alternative direction to staff." And that's, if you don't agree with that resolution, then we provide new direction to staff to bring something back, but we don't want to come here empty-handed when we can actually hopefully be more efficient. This one is not. This one's going to go back with new direction. As I hear it, and I know this is not fully what you're saying, but it sounds like it's the majority at this point, is the Finance, Admin, and Police would go, or if we want to choose a different committee, I don't care, it's up to you guys, but at this point, that's what they're saying, is going to go through the list of the yearly proclamations, and then any new ones that come up would go through the city manager and the mayor. But if there was a contentious one, I would hope, I would like to personally bring it forward, if it's something we have time for, to see if we can vote on it, to see if it's the direction that we would like to go. If it's, most of these aren't contentious, we just happen to have one, and I understand. So, I think that just bringing them through the mayor the way we do now works 99.9% of the time.
Do you think you should include the vice mayor in that review?
We could do that as a two-touch, it would, yeah, at least you have two people on right there if you did that review.
I think one of my concerns is, I like to, I would like to see the approved, annual approved list go in and then to the Subcommittee, and we look at that, but, I mean, there's some on here, as I look at this, we've got, and I agree with Councilmember Bagby, International Overdose Awareness Day, but then, or I mean, month, in August, and in March, we just had Prescription Drug Abuse Awareness Month, kind of the same thing. Also, a big concern, and the reason I'm saying those kind of things, that they're similar, but little...
A little overlap, yeah.
Yeah, a little different, but the amount of work...
That's what I was going to say.
The amount of work that goes into it for the staff, I mean, we're throwing a bunch of these out there, a lot of them are great, I mean, most of these are great, but the amount of work that goes into it, is that taking away from something else that we need to be moving forward on by just worrying about all these proclamations here, so...
We're looking at two weeks' worth of work...
Right.
On the books.
Yes.
That we're dedicating to just proclamations.
I was hoping we could maybe come up with some guidelines as, you know, for example, no international proclamations, stick with, you know, our location, like proclamations, you know, that affect Cloverdale, and maybe even a number on proclamations. Some nights, when we read three proclamations, to me, I mean, everybody could feel differently, I sometimes wish we just had two proclamations.
You're absolutely right, and that's something that the city manager tries to do, is, he tries for two, three's a max, and I kind of like your idea that anything that is international gets brought to the council for a vote. I heard, I heard two over here.
I agree.
So, David, do you want me to explain the direction? I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I think that, is that an okay distinction to make, Jose? Because I think that we, sometimes we're not always aware of the communities or things that are important to people who live here until it's like really put in front of our faces, and so, I don't know if I want to be like Sebastopol and take a stance on the Great Wall of China, or, you know, not that they have, I'm just making up, I'm just making something up, but taking a stance on something that's not necessarily our jurisdiction. Sorry about that. So, I'm happy with that as a guideline.
So, just, and I know, Mayor, you're going to repeat the direction, one possibility for input purposes, even the master list, I would say, or the list of the, it could also come to the council for approval as a body...
Yeah, if it will.
Instead of that, instead of a Subcommittee, the council...
Well, the Subcommittee will go through it and then bring it here as part of the resolution.
Oh, perfect, understood, so that could, that's, so that gives input as far as what the year's going to look like, and yes, you can, you can have like guidelines, like anything international will come to the council for even consideration whether the proclamation happens, or if it's controversial, the council could set. One thing is, and one thing we could explore as well, is, one thing you mentioned, Councilmember, was potentially having like guidelines. I have seen jurisdictions that say the proclamation, or the request for proclamation, the item needs to be of local concern, and there's like bullet points of, here are bullet points of what we look at, kind of like the form, right, David, as far as the form for when you, when somebody wants a proclamation, but here's what we look at, and here's our guidelines, and anything that kind of steps out of that, it starts being controversial, and maybe gets placed, consideration of possible proclamations on an agenda for discussion. I don't know, don't want to complicate things, but that just kind of pushes things forward or moves things forward, and the controversial things get discussed.
David, do you need me to repeat the direction on this, or, I can if you'd like?
I would like that.
Okay. So, we are going to take the master list, I'll call it that, the master list to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. Go through it. If everyone has access to it, you have access to David, if there are some things you don't want, you can go through your channels without violating the Brown Act. Subcommittee will bring it back here on the agenda on a resolution for the master list. Any proclamations that come up throughout the year that are local or non-controversial, they can go through the mayor. If it's something that the mayor or city manager feels would be controversial in any way, or international, or something along the lines that doesn't affect Cloverdale directly, it will be brought back to the council for a vote for the proclamation. Is that fair? And is that a fair assessment, everyone?
I have a question. Well, I guess what I would like is more information, like, you know, if it says breast cancer awareness, I want to know whose proclamation is this, does it belong to the American Red Cross, or, I mean, or the American Cancer Society, or who exactly? So, I guess, you know, I personally, I guess what I want to express is, I really don't want it going to a Subcommittee that I'm not on, and I feel like I want more input as to what's going to hit the agenda.
Well, there's a lot of things on the homeless committee that I like to do, too, but I can't because I'm not on the committee, so I go through my channels as well and make my suggestions.
But why does it have to go to the Finance Committee? Proclamations have nothing to do with finance or police.
Admin. What committee would you like it on?
I would take it on the homeless committee, I mean...
It doesn't fit the agenda.
I mean, I guess my whole point of this discussion is, I feel like I want more input, but I don't feel like I'm going to be getting more input.
So...
This master list, though, is going to end up going through based on the current recommendation from...
And it's going to come back here for you to discuss.
It's going to go to the committee, and then it will come to council before approval.
Well, I hope that the master list, next to it, will say who's asking for each proclamation, like, you know, if it, instead of just saying breast cancer, it says American Red Cross proclamation or something, so it's not just like a...
So, who writes our proclamations, Michael?
I think they go between David and I, many of them are, just looking at this list, for example, our national ones, so they're just traditional ones that go countrywide, so, you know, things like National Disabilities Awareness Month, Black History Month, things like those aren't necessarily a private sector agency, it's a national proclamation that we are just participating in. There are many that come directly to us, like that, the one that, you know, was not everyone agreed on, was a specific group sent an email to me, they had a very specific language, we adapted it to what we thought might be a little bit more accommodating to the community, and it still wasn't, and that's okay, but, yeah, they come in very many different forms and ways, so it's hard to necessarily say that, but I can definitely add the ones that I can find historically, I can at least try to give whatever information I can to this list, like the one that's on there, and I know we're not displaying this right now to the public, the one that's in your packet, the ones that are not highlighted are ones that we've currently already done.
Let me go one step further, they'll probably put an end to this. If there's any that you feel are controversial in any way, please let the city manager know how you would like it and things that you would like to see on it, so that he can try to incorporate. That way, you are being heard 100%, and that would be the easiest way, but that way, we're not trying to decide what you're thinking, you're telling us...
I would just like to see them before they hit the agenda.
And that's, so that, there you go. And I meet with David once a week, I know Councilmember Walter does, I know Vice Mayor Wheeler does, I know Councilmember Bagby does. That helps a lot, to be honest, is, even if it's a bi-weekly or a monthly, that helps a lot to solve a lot of this small stuff. Good? Good direction?
With the current direction, just so I know, this list, we want to add to it?
So, that list is going to go to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, and we're going to go through it there and then bring it back here on the resolution.
No, I understand, I know Councilmember Morgan Stern wanted me to add some more information to it, would you, is that what the council would like as a whole?
Any ones that, any council member has any issues with, they want to know where it's coming from, then they need to contact you and talk about it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I provide what, the information that you want to...
The onus needs to be on us on that, it doesn't need to be you trying to say, "Well, Gus might have issue with this one," or, you know, it needs to be us saying, you know...
It's confusing, because you say to talk to David, now it's talk to mine.
It's the same, it's going to be the same thing, talk to David, you can go to David or Michael, it's going to go through the same channels, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest, Councilmember, I'm not sure if you meet with David or Kevin on a regular basis, but I'll tell you, in every other week or once-a-week meeting with either one of them, just to kind of go over stuff that's happening, it goes a long way. I'd probably suggest you try and do that if you don't already, so...
Direction.
I mean, you are a council member, and your opinion is really valuable. You're one vote of five that control how the city is run, and you have to keep abreast with what's going on, and the best way to do that is to meet with city staff, so...
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, any other further comments, questions, or concerns?
You know, just, if I, just procedurally, what might be helpful, I think that, I'd have to go back and check our, I legislate for, you know, previous proclamations, and I think they do normally just get thrown up, just as the proclamation, and maybe you just want to have a short staff report that has the description of the organization that it's from, you know, the origin, just if there's any additional information, that could just be part of a short, I emphasize the word, short, staff report, that could accompany it to explain, maybe, you know, maybe if it came from an organization from within Cloverdale or a group of residents, or if it's international, just a short, you know, explanation that's separate from the proclamation might be helpful.
Mayor, the direction provided tonight, it's clear, we understand, and we'll agendize the list before the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, and ultimately plan to bring it back as a, for council's approval of a master list with some, with some additional guidelines that address concerns about, you know, international matters and the number of proclamations. And again, the form was to help, the staff sometimes is in the untenable position of trying to decide whether something's going to be important, and it's, again, a reflection of the council and the community, that's why we wanted to create a little bit of process around this, or that's the recommendation, certain... bit of process around this, or that's the recommendation, certainly understanding council member, uh, Morgan Stern's desire to, to weigh in on, on the, on the resolution, on the proclamations.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to I-2 Subcommittee and Regional Board Appointments.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Included in your packet is the results of the preference indication worksheets that were shared by myself to council members at your December 13th meeting. What, what the staff does annually is distribute the, the preference ranking worksheets for both subcommittees and regional boards. We utilize some criteria to kind of inform staff's recommendations. Again, staff's recommendations are just that, it's a, a recommendation, a starting point for council consideration. But what, what we present in terms of our recommendations is based on our, our attempt to provide, you know, some parity in the council's workload with respect to the subcommittees you sit on, with respect to the regional board work that you participate in, but also to support some continuity between the committee makeup or membership in the current year and the new year, and again, being mindful of your, your workload. One of the things that's evident in the, the, the packet is, staff, myself, did not make a recommendation as to who should serve as the Subcommittee Chair. We'd like to hear from council in, in terms of who would, who, who you desire to serve as, as Subcommittee Chair. I know I've had a, a conversation with Councilmember Walter about his perspective on that, and I think that's something that council should discuss, along with the designation of the primary and alternates for the regional boards. So with that said, I recommend, the, the, the rankings are presented, and our recommendations for subcommittees are presented on page two of the attachments, and the recommendations for regional boards are presented on page four. What we've done as a past practice is just walk through each of the subcommittees and confirm your recommendations. We will note those tonight and bring those back for formal adoption by resolution at your next meeting. As part of that process, we also would set the meeting dates and times for those subcommittees. And what we, we, we bring that up because often the meeting dates and times are reflective of the individual council members that are appointed to those, to those subcommittees. So kind of as a starting point, Mayor, members of council, we really just recommend just kind of walking down first the list of subcommittees and then transitioning to the list of, of regional boards.
Perfect. So the first thing, I, I've had Councilmember Morgan Stern reach out to me regarding the homeless Subcommittee. She was very, had strong feelings about keeping it separate, and I would, I would agree with her at this point, that I would like to see the homeless committee not be considered added to the Finance Admin Police Subcommittee, and I would actually suggest that Councilmember Morgan Stern be the chair, if she's interested. But that's just, that's just one, that's the only thing that I, I wanted to mention before we went anywhere, is just making sure that the homeless committee stayed out, and I want to see if anyone had any issues with that.
Mayor, just, just quick background on that. That, that recommendation was, was just largely based on the, the history of the homelessness Subcommittee and the community advisory group that was formally appointed and, you know, did a lot of the heavy lifting to develop a master plan, which was ultimately approved by council. The issue of homelessness is definitely a significant issue, and their, their staff does not have any issues or concern about putting that as a topical matter under, under Finance Admin and Police.
With me being part of that decision-making, on, on, when I saw that, saying it would fit well, because we've, you know, we, we did our, our plan, and we, we did a lot of what we wanted to do with that separate homeless Subcommittee, but hearing her concerns, I completely agreed and thought it better to stay, at least for another year. So that was the only thing I had. Let's start running through them then, since that part's changed now, let's go through the appointments for the year. Finance, Admin and Police. Someone else wants to please speak up.
Can you go over those names?
Absolutely. So under Finance, Admin and Police, they have myself and Councilmember Walter listed as the appointments. Is there anyone else that would want to be, be on that committee instead? Seeing none. Councilmember Walter, would you like to be the chair?
I'd prefer not to be the chair.
Are you okay being on that committee?
I am okay being on that committee.
So then I'll stay on that committee, and I will be listed as the chair, and Councilmember Walter as the vice chair. Next one is Planning and Sustainability. It is listed as Councilmember Bagby and Vice Mayor Wheeler. Are you two okay with that? Is there anyone else that would like to put their name in the hat? Seeing none. Who wants to be the chair?
I think that Councilmember Bagby should still continue to be the chair on that.
Perfect. So under Planning Sustainability, yep. Councilmember Bagby's chair, Vice Mayor Wheeler is vice chair. Public Works and Facilities, we have Vice Mayor Walter and council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Walter and Vice Mayor Wheeler listed.
Mayor, the only change I have to that, and I, I spoke with Councilmember Walter on this, and the only thing we wanted to do is switch me and put myself as the chair and then Walter as, so, chair that committee on that, so, if you're okay.
Anyone else that wants to put their name in the hat on that committee? Seeing none. So we're good there? Michael? Okay, thank you. Joint City and School District, we have myself and Councilmember Morgan Stern. Is there anyone that wants to put their name in the hat on that one? Seeing none. Councilmember Morgan Stern, would you like to be the chair or the vice chair?
Vice chair.
I will be the chair of that one as well. Michael, good there? This committee, we didn't have any suggestions, but I would suggest we stick with the two, because consistency is very good in that committee, with Vice Mayor Wheeler and Councilmember Morgan Stern.
Morgan Stern as chair. You agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. The only other thing on that also is, I wonder if, and I don't know if this works with your schedule, if, I know it's quarterly, but, you know, as things come up, I'm wondering if maybe we should switch that?
Like every other month, perhaps?
I mean, it could even be, it could even go monthly, but then, as needed, then we can switch it back to quarterly if we start gaining some speed on it, but I think.
So when we set a schedule, it's easier to add than it is to take away, because of staff time. So if we set quarterly and then you added in a, a special meeting somewhere if you needed it, it might be cost-effective and time-effective if you did it that way?
It's much easier to add a meeting and cancel.
If something came up, you could add a special homeless meeting.
Makes perfect sense.
Individual, meetings are a lot easier to add as special meetings than do a bunch of cancellations.
Perfect. So keep, yeah, then my suggestion would be keep it quarterly, and then if we need or.
That's with any of these, we can always have a special meeting.
Gotcha.
If a subject matter comes up that's.
I'm happy with that.
Calendar time, I forgot to go over that with everyone. Is there anything on the council, you've all seen it, is there anything different that you would like to do? I reached out to the school district, and they agreed with the times that were set as well, so, because they had said they didn't like the time, so I gave them the opportunity and. Would you like to speak to it under public comment? I see, I see fingers waving at me, and I'm like, oh, man, is my wife here?
I know.
I think I would know that by now. No, we did talk about the fact that the timing was a little bit off for the two of us who, and I believe it's the third Monday every other month, correct?
Third Monday at 5:00 PM.
Perfect. And so, no, we totally agreed that 5:00 PM would probably be the best way.
It was set at that time because of teachers and parents.
Like myself, yes.
So that's why it was always so late.
So it's much appreciated.
Mayor, please note, um, we did recently choose April, August and November to be those dates because we felt it aligned with the school year a little bit more. That wasn't discussed at that joint meeting, so I wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
If those dates work.
When, when we first started this, but they were, and we're like, nobody can go. All right. So anything that we missed on that, Michael, for your list?
Uh, just to clarify, Morgan Stern chair, Wheeler vice chair?
On the homelessness, correct. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the subcommittees, I know in the past we had a, a committee with the city and the fire district, and we moved it, if I'm not mistaken, David, to encompass, be encompassed under another Subcommittee? Yeah. Is that something that we might want to try and reestablish with the fire district, or are we comfortable where it sits now? We have really, for all intents and purposes, no communication with them whatsoever, unless I'm totally wrong, David?
Well, certainly, staff, including myself and the police chief, consult with our fire chief on, you know, matters of significant local concern, and I know you do as well, Mayor. In, in terms of scheduling the joint city school, so I mean, it's kind of like the joint city school, it's trying to find a time that works mutually for two members of their board of directors and, and two council members and staff. And, and that, that was kind of the, the challenge in the past, that was finding dates that worked for their, their board members as well as ours, so that it, it's challenging to bring in members of their board to vote on matters on the finance agenda, but it does provide, the finance admin and police agenda does provide the opportunity to discuss, again, kind of under the, the auspices of administration, you know, any local concerns relative to kind of fire operations.
Well, would it be out of line to request some type of a, a quick email to that Subcommittee every month with what's going on in the fire district? I know they're getting ready to, in March, I believe, there's going to be a referendum for a new tax, and we've yet to hear anything as a council. Usually they come in front of the council and request time to chat with us. So I, I, I just don't know if fellow council members are comfortable not knowing what's going on with the fire district. And, and I guess I could pick up the phone and meet with Chief Jenkins anytime and, and discuss that, or I'm sure I can call Chris over at the PD, and I'm sure he'd give me an update as well. But I just wanted to throw that out there, if anybody was feeling left behind as far as what's going on at the fire district.
So we've offered in the past to have them, obviously, and, and present, and they never have, but let me reach out to Chief Jenkins again and see if we can reestablish a more, a better communication for that, and get a, an update, for a, a monthly update at least, at the least.
And, and we have coordinated with the fire district on, you know, significant legislative matters. It's referenced by Councilmember Walter, there is a ballot measure that is going to come forward, I believe, on the March ballot for a, a, a special tax to support fire operations, and those types of matters are things that we do like to bring to the full council for overview and presentation.
I'm wondering if they've set a date for that. I can't imagine that they aren't going to be before us, before March, but I know it's calendaring is tight. Have, have they contacted us to, I'd be surprised. They're, or they've done their polling and they have the answer, so, nothing's stopping us from taking a look at the ballot measure on our own and comparing it to our legislative platform and our community values and have a, just having a discussion.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Yes. Okay. Moving on to the 2024 Regional Board, Board Appointments. Well, we're just line by line, we'll start with the, first one is the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce Liaison. 2023, it was Walter and Wheeler. 2024 recommended is Wheeler and Morgan Stern. Anyone else want to put their name in the hat for that?
And, and Mayor, just, again, do, if you want to designate a primary and alternate?
Primary and secondary as well, so, who wants to be the primary liaison and who wants to be the alternate?
Say, we, we've got the 2024 recommended, I mean, does, maybe we just approach it as, does anybody want to make a change to the recommended? Because I'm, I'm fine with it as it's written.
What's the recommended is?
Well, just all of them, that, the column, this is the city manager, I don't have an, I don't have a problem with the recommendations as they're written.
I would, with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, I would like to be the representative for that one at this point. I need to step more into the alternative, or into the regional and not just be the alternate.
Well, the, the issue with that is that currently I'm of a two-year SMART board appointment, and I'm required to be on SCTA to maintain that SMART seat. So I'd like to maintain SCTA for the time being.
Well, well, just a question. Councilmember Bagby, so if you're not reappointed to this committee, what would happen to the remaining term on your SMART appointment?
Oh, I'd, I'd lose my SMART appointment. I'm required to be on SCTA to hold that SMART seat.
And that's, that appointment comes from mayors and council members?
That comes from mayors and council members, yeah.
So how, can, I, I've only been there for one of those meetings when they did the appointments. Can you tell me how that works, just so I know? What I'm trying to do is get myself into the more regional and kind of create a succession plan for us, because what if you or I or neither of us are here next year? You know, what do we do? And so, I think ahead of this and.
Well, I'm one year through my two-year SMART appointment, and I'd like to finish that, because I'm also currently the vice chair of SMART, and I think that it's important for Cloverdale to have that strong regional representation, so that, that's my pathway for bringing that leadership and that voice from Cloverdale to both Sonoma County Transportation Authority and, and at SMART.
And that's two appointments from council and then one at large, correct?
There are, so, for, for SMART, what's, the, the current two seats that are up this year are the one, there is a non-Sonoma County appointment, which is held by Deb Fudge, so she's not required to sit on SCTA from, from Windsor. And then the other SMART holder is, who's up this year, I believe, is, is Chris Rogers, because they, we, they, those seats get alternated, and he's required to be on SCTA. So that's how, that's how those, that's just how those seats work. For the, the seat that I am in, which is, and I'm, you know, halfway through my, my two-year term, I'm required to be on SCTA.
Possible for you to still stay on SMART using Deb Fudge's spot?
Um, I, I'm not going to presume to do that. This is, Deb, Deb has announced that this is her last year on council, and SMART's been her baby, so I'd say good luck to anybody who wants to take her off on her, her final year of service, right before SMART gets to Windsor. So I think it's an, it's an important time to have some, some continuity for her, just out of the respect that, that she's done, that she, the respect that she's owed for what she's contributed to Windsor and for transportation for Sonoma County, so, I, I, that would be something that I would not be comfortable campaigning for and doing. I think it's important for me to continue to be serving on Sonoma County Transportation, not only for my SMART board, but also I was just appointed to the CalCity's Transportation Policy Committee, and I did that for a reason. I did it so that I could bring the experience that I'm getting in Sonoma County, the Transportation Authority and at SMART, to lobbying at the, the state level. So I'd like to be able to continue doing that.
Sure.
Can I just take a quick, uh, break?
Sure.
Okay, Kim.
Walter. Well, we'll just take a five-minute break. That's okay. All right, five-minute break. You can come back early if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No, it doesn't matter.
I thought everybody would jump up.
All right, well, reconvene at 7:14. Councilmember Bagby, you brought up good points, and I'll concede, find another way to get involved in regional. You're right, you're doing a lot of good work, and you're on a two-year term, so I'd rather you do that than...
Oh, thanks, I, I appreciate that, and I, I think my, my fellow board members probably appreciate that too, they just got me, um, so that I know how to find my locker there and be effective, so, um...
Hopefully you can do SMART and I can do this.
Yeah. That's why that, um, non-CTA SMART seat is so sought after, but it didn't work in the cycle that I was working in, and, uh, yeah, yeah.
And then Fudge got me.
Yeah, I, I, and, I mean, we're actually making, um, you know, a, a special effort to, unfortunately, you know, the SMART extension completion won't be done until after she has left office. She actually has plans to, um, uh, it just, kind of depending on what life does, she may not be in the area anymore, but she's already, um, got the entire board and our, um, executive director, Eddie Cummins, to agree that she will be one of the speakers at the groundbreaking, even though she will no longer be in office, because she has been a champion of that, uh, project since long before, uh, 2008, so, um, I just would, I would be hesitant to, um, throw, then have to throw my hat in the ring, uh, because I really want to see her be able to enjoy her, her final year, um, on the SMART board and, um, you know, as the, as she, as, as she watches that completion, um, that extension get completed up to, to, to Windsor, probably as we speak. So, thank you so much for the consideration, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melanie, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work you do on the Transportation Authority and what you do with SMART for the city of Cloverdale. I really do appreciate that. Um, I am concerned if, if, if you should not run, uh, this year, how, how are we going to replace you, so, um, uh, but I guess we'll worry about that when the time comes. Thank you.
Maybe as an alternate, you can start fitting in. The, under the Mayor's and Councilmember's Association Legislative Committee, how does that work? Because I, I don't, I'm not familiar with that one, with the, it's not an appointment and an alternate, is it?
Well, actually, I'm the current chair of, I'm the current chair of that, that committee, and so I'd requested to, to stay on, um, or Sonoma County mayors and councilmembers.
There is a need for an alternate, uh, to, to the, uh, primary for that decision?
And that, that's actually a meeting that, uh, where a lot of times the, the cities, um, other councilmembers attend the meeting, and, um, especially when we have a special guest speaker, I mean, when I, so as chair, it was really great to work with Nancy Hall Bennett, who's the, the North Bay CalCities, um, uh, person who, who manages that, that committee for us, and we were able to bring in, um, uh, incoming Assembly Speaker Cecilia Aguirre-Curry to speak to us, and then also Senator Maguire, and so for those events, those, those, that, those email invitations got sent out to the entire, um, council, not just the member of the committee, so that they could come and get legislative updates, and that's, that's one where if we're having, um, you know, a, a senator or assembly member or a local, another local policymaker come in, those are often attended by, um, people who don't, that's, who are either alternates or who, um, who are just on the councils and, you know, want to come in and, uh, get the legislative information, so, um, certainly the alternate and any other councilmembers, um, are absolutely welcome to, to come to those meetings, especially when we have a really great speaker like we have the last, um, couple of meetings.
Where are we going to relinquish a little bit of power to let some of us with the succession plan? Do you have to think? Maybe I turn to you and say, you're on these, on the boards of the committees, not just the committees, it makes it difficult.
Oh, yeah. The other two options are, um, you know, zero waste Sonoma and, um, and Sonoma Clean Power. Um, the, the issue with Sonoma Clean Power that I like, really like to work on is there is so much intersection in transportation, um, because of the, um, movement toward, um, electric vehicles and electric charging and infrastructure, so there is a lot of synergy between, actually, Sonoma County Transportation and Sonoma Clean Power, so I really do, um, it's valuable to have people who, who serve on, um, both of those committees, um, but certainly, you know, zero waste is up for grabs, that certainly is an exciting, um, uh, committee to be on, especially with SB 13, hey, you know, come on.
Straight face it, come on, straight face it here.
Yeah, SB 13, um, uh, help me, David, the, the new SB, SB 13.
1383.
Or 38, I was going to get it backwards, 1383, I think that with the implementation of that, and it's, and it's a really fun, um, committee as well, because it has both, uh, you know, the supervise, some of the supervisors and, um, other councilmembers, and there's a lot of good work that is being done there, so that for succession, I think that's a, that's a really strong possibility.
So I'm, I personally, I'm hoping I can get myself on one of the, the top three, and you've named two that you're both on the board, how about Sonoma Clean Power? But it has, it has Vice Mayor's name on it, so. Not mine.
Question as well, so you guys can arm wrestle or...
If you would like to take over Sonoma Clean Power and jump in on that, get yourself out there.
I, I would suggest zero waste, and the reason I'm arguing, you know, Sonoma Clean Power is, is that just because of the synergy between transportation and what Sonoma Clean Power is doing, but, I mean, I'm certainly, if, you know, if, if, if folks want to jump in, but I would, I would say zero waste is a, a really good one to, to get, to catch your teeth on, for sure. So if somebody wants to, to jump into that, that would be great.
Which one?
Zero waste.
I think I would like to put my name on the Sonoma Clean Power.
Well, then, yep, go ahead and take it. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's, I think it's, that's a good one for me, because, again, it's, um, I'm on the transportation and, uh, communications and, um, oh, there's one other thing, at the, at, at CalCities, which I haven't had my first meeting yet, but it's, it's infrastructure and broadband, and there are so many things that, that coincide with it, but if you feel like, um, you want to have a go at it, I'd say go right ahead.
So, no one else has any?
For clarification on that one, Mayor, what was the switch?
I'm taking Bagby's spot on Sonoma Clean Power. Talked about zero waste. Are you interested?
Be interested in taking that, that would be fine.
Vice Mayor? Okay, I see the wheels turning. Or anyone else?
I think, I want to, see, I'm putting a lot of my energy into the nor, northern Sonoma County air pollution, we've got a lot going on, on that, so I do not think I want to take on zero waste Sonoma.
You don't have anyone listed for the regional, so we'll leave zero waste then where it's at.
Okay.
Oh, there's no name on the Regional Library Advisory Board. If no one wants to take it, I will put my name on it, and Vice Mayor will put his name as the alternate.
Just not even coming.
And the next one, let's see, I've never even, did you go, go to any meetings with the Department of Health Services, Health Action Council? Did you ever get anything on that council?
I never knew about any meetings, so I never went.
Probably, some of these don't have things, so, um, if you need a name on it, you can put Sam, myself, and Vice Mayor of the Year.
Cloverdale Senior Center, oh, it's still blank as well.
Cloverdale Senior, oh, okay.
Is there anyone on the senior center?
There is no one's name on it.
You could put me on that, if everyone's okay with that.
Absolutely.
How about March? How about Councilmember?
Councilmember Morganstern is the alternate.
I will be the alternate.
There we go. I love it.
Now, you're, you're still doing, uh, coffee with the mayor?
I will do coffee with the mayor.
Okay.
So, that, we will ask that only one of you be there or one of you not.
Yeah, or if the Vice Mayor wants to join you, just give a heads up.
Absolutely.
It's, it's a fun little group.
It, it's a great group, it's a, it's, it's like gossiping with your neighbors.
Right.
They have the list that's on the TV screen for you right now, the, the fourth column over, does that look accurate?
What was that again?
He, he, he just, he put it on the screen, just with all the names.
Oh, okay.
Currently under, uh, Russian River Water State Association, uh, Councilmember Morganstern has done a fantastic job, and, and I know she wants to continue, uh, I would recommend, just in case there's a need, uh, to have an alternate, if for some reason, Councilmember...
Someone wants it. Perfect.
Yeah, put me in there.
Not out of desire. There's all of them, I believe. Good for everyone? All right. On, let me see, back to my next screen. It's a good direction, this isn't something, I'm sorry, I should have looked. We don't vote, we bring this back, correct? It's just direction at this point. Alternative, yep, there is, yep, perfect. Okay, good. All right, moving into subcommittee reports. Do you have any?
There won't really be any until...
2024. Letters, the city manager report.
Mayor, uh, members of council, just a couple of, uh, items to share, I want to first mention that we have scheduled the grand opening for the new dog park on Saturday, uh, January 27th, from, uh, 10, starting at 10, scheduled till noon, not sure if it'll take two, two full hours, uh, have invited both representatives from, uh, the Sonoma Marin area rail transit or SMART, as well as, uh, Sonoma County Transit and Department of Infrastructure. I've heard back from, uh, the Director Johannes Hovert, said he will be in attendance, um, so we're, we're excited about the, uh, the grand opening, and, uh, we, we have seen that the, uh, park has met the community with great popularity, so we're very excited, and I want to acknowledge the great work that was done by our, our park superintendent, Hector, to, uh, bring that to fruition, and of course, the council for all your support for funding that project. Uh, in addition, there is a mayor and councilmembers meeting scheduled for, uh, Thursday, uh, February 8th. The city of Cloverdale is the, the host for that meeting, so, uh, we are currently, currently coordinating and planning for, uh, being the host, uh, and Mayor, if you want to offer, uh, I did hear from, uh, Councilmember, uh, Morganstern, that, uh, she would definitely like to participate in, in the planning for that event.
I'll take on all the help I can get. I, I looked at this as something that, you know, was kind of put on my plate and my responsibility with, with the city manager, so I kind of just started running with it. If anyone has any suggestions or wants to help, I would absolutely love it, so, just, we'll, we'll get through it, uh, I, I look forward to it. The lineup so far, uh, we're planning on having it at the Vets Hall. Uh, we have all the drinks handled, uh, I have a caterer that is getting us a quote as we speak. That's it, so if anybody has any ideas, if we want to do a guest speaker, uh, if there's no suggestions at this point, so if there's things that you want, bring it up, David, bring it up to me, whatever you want to do, but I want to make it, uh, a good MCA. Please, go ahead.
Is the Vets Hall, um, definitely locked in? Because I...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
What were you thinking?
Well, I had discussed with the city manager possibly having it at a winery, someplace with a lot of ambiance.
Well, we can talk about it. What I was shooting for was kind of showing off our, our Vets Hall, because of the modeling and campaigning that they've done, and that the money the county's put in, I thought it was a good way to showcase it, that's how, why I went to them, and it also keeps our money local that is spent, so that's why, that's why I was going that direction. But if you, if you want an alternative, let's, let's discuss it. Sound good?
Sounds good.
David, anything else?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay.
Just a quick comment, obviously, with the beginning of the year, it's, uh, legislature is always busy, so making sure that we're up to in compliance with all the new laws. I know there were several employment law, uh, changes, so we're just making sure that, um, we're checking out the boxes that we need to, whatever laws we need to follow.
Thank you. Other councilmember reports, verbal reports, we have, uh, Councilmember Bagby's written, any verbal reports? Direction on future agenda items.
Mayor, I just wanted to remind council that, um, during that portion of the agenda is, is a good time to do a good-of-the-order report as well. Uh, I listed that in the comments, but last year, that wasn't always happening in that time period, but I just wanted to remind councilmembers that during councilmember reports, it's a good time to provide any oral reports, updates, good-of-the-order, regional boards, committees, community activities.
Absolutely.
It's the first meeting of the year, just wanted to remind councilmembers that that's your time to shine, if you have anything you want to say.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Let's real quick, just to double check. That, no one else has anything? Say, meeting adjourned at 7:30, thank you all.